Call the regular meeting of the Orion Trustee, uh, Orion Township Board of Trustees to order for Monday, May 4th. It's Star Wars holiday here. Uh, may the fourth be with you. Sorry. So we'll just kind of go through some rules and things here. Um, once we get started, but first I will, uh, ask the clerk, the clerk to please call the roll. Thank you.
Chris Barnett?
Here.
Penny Schultz, then Donnie Steele? Here.
Here.
Brian Bernie, then Julia Del Rimpel?
Here.
Here.
Mike Flood, then John Steimel?
Here.
Here.
Okay, thank you. The entire board is present. Um, but just kind of by way of, uh, kind of some housekeeping items, uh, if you've never joined us before, this is our new normal for now. Uh, we are meeting electronically in, uh, compliance with the governor's executive orders, um, as it relates to keeping social distancing. Uh, so thank you for joining us. We'd ask that you keep your microphones muted. Um, I will, uh, be able to mute and unmute, uh, you if I need to, but hopefully if you guys, uh, that are called in, uh, could do, do that for me. It'll make it easier because I'm juggling lots of things on my screen and on my desk and taking notes at the same time. Um, just want to remind everyone that we do want your public input and there'll be, uh, plenty of opportunities to give your public input. Um, and I will just run through how we're going to do that, uh, and let you know how, how to do that. So, um, if you have agenda items you want to speak on, there are a couple of ways you could start doing that now, or you can wait, uh, until we get to that item. And, um, I will, I will call on, on you for public comments. So that said, um, public comment for non-agenda items will take place, um, near the beginning of the meeting after we approve the bills. We'll give you, uh, three minutes to, to address the board on, on non-agenda items. If you want to address the board on agenda items, it will be just like if you were downstairs at Township Paw, uh, we will go through and give you an opportunity. Uh, the way I'll do that is, uh, the way you can give public comment, um, either on non-agenda items or agenda items, uh, first I will ask the people that I can see your faces on the computer screen to raise your hand and I will call on you, uh, um, to, and I will unmute your microphone or let you do that for yourself. Uh, then secondly, um, if you're on the phone, I can see it looks like we have at least one person that's dialed in. Uh, I will ask, um, if there are others that would like to give comments that are not on video, and that would be for you on the phones to unmute yourself and you would state your name, uh, for the record, and then you can give your comment. And then third, there's a chat bubble, uh, in the go-to-meeting, um, function, uh, the go-to-meeting platform that we will use. If you're not familiar, I, I don't have a lot of time to explain it to you now, but you can play around with it and you will see, I'll just type a little note saying hi, and you'll see it now has popped up there and your little, should have a little red chat bubble. So you can, you can also text your comments there. So we'll look at the chat bubble, uh, to see if anyone's giving comments. And then the last way you can do it, um, if you have comments and you want the board to, um, under, hear you and you, but you don't want to do any of the above or the previously mentioned, uh, options, uh, you can send an email to board@oriantownship.org, board@oriantownship.org. So I will put that in the chat, um, comment as well. I'm not watching the ON TV feed, but during our last meeting, they included that on their feed. We appreciate that. Um, so that's an opportunity, uh, again, another way for you to, um, connect with us. That said, um, we will continue with our meeting. I will remind you, I put that email address in the chat bubble. So if you want to check it, uh, it, see it there, but it's quite simple. It's board@oriantownship.org. And Penny Schultz, our clerk, and myself will be checking that email address throughout the meeting, uh, and we'll be working together to make sure that if we get emails, we read them at the appropriate times. So thanks in advance for your patience and understanding that we are, um, all learning together, and we will try to keep this, uh, smooth and on task. So with that and giving you your ground rules, I would now, um, ask Clerk Schultz, um, and I didn't ask you ahead of time, so I apologize, but we always start our meetings with invocation and pledge, and we will continue to do that. Do we have someone for the invocation tonight?
Yes, Treasurer Steele will be leading the invocation.
Wonderful. So if you would please, um, Treasurer Steele, lead us in our invocation, and then we will all recite the pledge together. Uh, and, uh, so I would ask you to stand if you were here, but you can stand or sit or do whatever you want. Uh, so Treasurer Steele, I'll throw it to you, please.
Okay, so Mr. Rogers has always said that when, uh, the world is a good place because when there are bad, when bad things happen, look around and you look at all the good people helping. And I believe that our community has, uh, we have a good world because of how, how many people have helped this community in the last two months. So I want to thank God during this prayer. Thank God for the many blessings that we have witnessed throughout our families in our community. Please, I pray that we, um, go to you, God, for wisdom and how we, um, may continue to live safely and also remain fearless. So please give us strength during this time and help us throughout on the other end towards your light. In this we pray, in your son's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. And now, uh, if you could all join me in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, those of you who've done, you may be seated. Um, look at that, we even had flags here, virtual flags. Um, all right. So, um, we will continue with our meeting tonight, and, uh, I would just say that we generally, um, highlight good things that are happening and proclamations. I want to share two of them with you. Uh, first of all, uh, and, and throughout the meeting, um, I will do the best I can to keep my screen updated with, um, our board book so that you can see, uh, what we're talking about. So, uh, that said, um, I will let you know that, um, May is Mental Health Month, and we, um, throughout the year, we take the opportunity at many of our meetings to recognize important events in our community and encourage our residents to stay engaged in supporting of the things that, uh, support our residents. And so May is Mental Health Not Month, and, um, I would just note that, uh, mental health is very important for our individual wellbeing and vitality, as well as our families and communities and businesses. And whereas one in five Americans will experience a mental health illness that requires treatment at some point in their lives, and one in 10 children has a serious emotional disturbance that if untreated can lead to school failure, physical illness, substance use, jail, and even suicide. And whereas the stigma and stereotypes associated with mental illness can keep people from seeking treatment that could improve their quality of life, and whereas mental illness is a biologically based brain disorder and cannot be overcome with willpower, and is not related to a defect in a person's character or intelligence, whereas mental health recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling people with the illness to live in our community, uh, while striving to achieve his or her full, full potential. And whereas mental health recovery not only benefits individuals with mental health disorders, disorders, um, but also enriches the culture of our community. And whereas the Oakland County Community Mental Health Authority and its service provider agencies are committed to inspiring hope, empowering people, and strengthening communities. Now therefore, I, Chris Barnett, Supervisor of the Charter Township of Orion, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2020, as Mental Health Month, and call upon our citizens and government agencies and public and private institutions, businesses and schools to recommit our state to increasing awareness. Um, and I read most of that and didn't paraphrase much because it is extremely important. And now more than ever, um, we have seen, um, as you could probably imagine, an uptick and, um, thankfully our calls for service for police and fire have not, um, exponentially increased, um, but the mental health calls have increased. And we need to be very cognizant that people are under a lot of pressure and encourage people to seek the help that they need. Our township website has tons of resources, um, if you're interested in seeking additional help, um, but I think it's important for us to really focus on that, um, and the timing of it this, this year, uh, based on our, entering our seventh week of our stay home order. Uh, also, one other group I'd like to recognize, and I don't have this in your packet tonight, Board, but our teachers. May is, um, Teacher Appreciation Month, and this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. So I just got done shooting my daily Facebook Live video literally right before we launched this meeting and, uh, gave a, uh, little shout out to our teachers and encouraged our residents to do the same. So, uh, thank you for that. Um, we have several amazingly gifted, talented, and deserving citizens that we will be recognizing as Citizens of the Month for March, April, and May. Uh, we'll do that all at once. Um, I had not added it yet to one of these agendas, um, because we love to be able, be able to honor those folks in person, um, but I, though they have been selected, uh, they haven't been awarded and they don't know yet. So, uh, stay tuned. We'll, we'll include that out of future meetings, uh, as well. Hopefully in person at some point. Okay, with that, um, next item on tonight's agenda is the approval of our bills, um, and entertain a motion, and I will put them on our screen for everyone to see. Um, in, in my screen, I'm not, um, does anybody have a motion? Donnie, thank you. I can see you now. Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills in the total amount, including payroll of $1,058,507.60. And I just added the payroll onto the total board bill run. And then I have a comment.
Support.
Um, my road commission, $120,000 that we paid, and we had our police that we paid, our police bill, um, including dispatch of $409,000. Those were the big, um, board bills this month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Donnie. Um, and for some reason, my screen's not sharing, but the board can see these bills. Um, I'll get that resolved here. I just had to go out back in. Are there any other comments or questions on the board, on the board bills by board members? Seeing none. Are there any public comments on today's bills? See if that worked now. There you go. Uh, yeah, you can see that now. Sorry about that. Uh, is there any public comment? I don't see any hands raised. Anyone want to, um, speak up on public comment? I see no one. Okay. Uh, we'll close public comment, and I would ask the clerk to please call the roll on payment of the bills.
Del Rimpel, then Flood?
Flood says yes.
Staimo, then Barnett?
Yes.
Yes.
Schultz, then Steele, yes?
Yes.
Bernie, then Del Rimpel?
Yes.
Uh-oh, we're having that, that issue again, Julia. You might need to phone in.
If she could text me or text you, Chris?
Or you could text in the group. You could text, say yes. Um, if you can hear us, Julia, you could, um, text in the chat bubble, yes, for that.
Put your, put your thumb up, Julia. Yes or no?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Every day there's tech challenges. All right, the bills are paid. That brings us to public comment. This is an opportunity to address our board about non-agenda items. And again, I will go through those options that you all have to address our board. There are, uh, four options. The first is by raising your hand. The second is by unmuting your microphone. The third is by typing a message in the chat bubble, and the fourth would be to send an email to, uh, board@oriantownship.org, which I am looking at right now just to make sure that we, um, see those coming in. So would anyone that I can see your faces like to give public comment on non-agenda items, please raise your hand? I see none. Um, how about if anyone's on the phone and would like to give public comment, please unmute yourself and say your name, and you may give comment now? We'll just wait a moment. Anyone? Okay. Uh, and now I'm checking the chat bubble. There are no messages there, and I am on the inbox of board@oriantownship.org, and there are no, uh, messages there as well. So this time we will move forward. Again, we'll give you an opportunity at the end of our meeting, also during each of the, uh, agenda items. Uh, next is, on tonight's agenda, is approval of tonight's agenda. Um, I would, um, propose two additions that, um, I believe that the board was emailed, uh, today, but I will also put them on my screen. The reason they were added, and I under, appreciate your understanding. Uh, Jeff Stout, our, um, Director of Public Services is in the meeting, um, and he can address these questions when we get to those items, but we need to award a contract for the, um, Baldwin Road median and shoulder molding, mowing, lawn mowing of phase one. And then also, we are doing some emergency repairs on a sanitary force sewer main, uh, that, that, that's the reason those two items were added. So I'd add those, uh, because they're new and maybe somebody had, haven't had a chance to read them, we will add those as item, uh, pending. Item C would be the Baldwin Rose, Road Phase One mowing contract, and item 8D would be the Hemingway Woods sanitary force main. Uh, so are there any other changes or a motion to approve as amended? Go ahead, Penny.
I move to approve.
I think I need to add a closed session. Is that what you're gonna say, Dan?
Yeah.
Thank you. Like, thank you. Thank you, Dan. I'd like to add a closed session, um, at the, at the end of our meeting, um, to discuss, uh, labor.
Negotiations.
Labor negotiations. So those will be the three changes. Is there a motion to approve as amended or any other proposed changes? Go ahead, Penny.
I move to approve the agenda as amended, and I do have a comment. The board did receive through your extras. The board did receive through your extras those additional items.
Okay. It was moved by, um, um, Clerk Schultz and supported by Trustee Flood. Um, is there any questions or comments from the board? Don't see any hands. Uh, any public comment? Okay. Uh, we, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Um, okay. We have an agenda, seven zero. Okay, next item on tonight's agenda is our consent agenda. Tonight, the consent agenda, and again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen here for the next few minutes just so I can, uh, um, hopefully keep people somewhat engaged that are just watching our faces. Um, tonight's consent agenda consists of the following items, and I always read these. Um, see if I can zoom in a little bit here more for you too. Um, apologize that, um, if, if you're having a hard time seeing, you can, um, see all the things we're seeing on our screen, uh, on our website. Um, so you can see all these items. This is all, this is right on our website. Uh, so tonight's consent agenda consists of the following items. First, we will be approving, uh, minutes from our meeting on April 20th. We will be approving our community development block grant cooperative agreement for 2021, uh, in 20, through 2023, and we will be receiving and filing our first quarter treasure report. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve consent agenda.
Support.
Supported by Bernie. Moved by Flood, supported by Bernie. Is there any questions from any board members on any of the consent agenda items? And I'm trying to move my head back and forth between multiple screens here, so feel free in the next, uh, as I'm sharing my screen, feel free to chime in if I don't see you because I am going back and forth between three different screens here. Any questions, comments from the board? I'm not hearing.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yep.
Trustee Flood, I want to, uh, compliment, uh, Treasurer Steele for having the, uh, first quarter out on a timely fashion. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Mike.
Support.
All right. Um, that wasn't a motion. That was a compliment, but.
I got it. I just wanted to support his comment.
Are there any other, um, public comments or questions on tonight's consent, or are there any questions or comments from the public on tonight's consent agenda? There are only three items, as mentioned. Uh, first, I'm trying to look at the screen. Um, I would just encourage you, if you needed to make a comment on the consent agenda, just unmute yourself. This would be a good time to do that. Uh, we show no chat bubbles. We show no.
No. And no, no emails.
Okay. So I will close the public comment on the consent agenda and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Barnett, then Schultz?
Yes.
Yes. Steele, then Bernie?
Yes.
Yes.
Del Rimpel, then Flood?
Yes.
Yes.
Staimo?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven zero. Takes us to tonight's pending business. And we have, uh, four items tonight. First off is the second reading of the Planning Commission case 2019-38, which is a text amendment. Um, and, um, as mentioned when we did the first reading, I want to commend, uh, the Planning Department led by Tammy Gerling and the Planning Commissioners for all their hard work on this, lots of amendments. Um, uh, and, and I don't know that we need to cover much of it, but I'm happy to discuss it. I know, I see Tammy's on. Thank you, Tammy, uh, for being here. Um, normally I would flip this to Penny. If you would like me to, Penny, do you want to give the summary? Like, read your, or do you want me to just keep rolling with it? You tell me.
Keep rolling with it, Chris.
Okay, so I'm going to share my screen again, and just so you could, just so everyone at home can see, uh, what we're talking about. Um, and then Tammy, if you want to chime in at all, but just so everyone's aware, this is a nice little summary. Um, and we did cover this on our March 16th, uh, meeting, and Tammy has done a great job attaching all the documents, which just this item, I think, is about a hundred and, hundred or so pages. So, um, again, uh, be a second reading. Is there a motion from the board? And then I entertain, then after that, we'll entertain comments. Um, I'm trying to look at your hands. Uh, Penny?
I move to approve the second reading of PC 2019-38 text amendment, zoning ordinance number 78, articles 2, 5, 6, 14, 16, 24, 27, 30, and 34.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, moved by Schultz and supported by Staimo, who's also our representative to the Planning Commission. Um, Tammy, or John, or anyone, want to just have any comments in your, in your packet? Are all the red line changes? Um, again, a lot of this was a lot of cleanup, uh, a lot of things that we've been working on for a long time. Tammy's been compiling. Tammy, did you want to, um, share anything? I'll throw it to you first.
Sure. Um, you know, I had gone over a summary of it last time. And as you said, it's, it's, um, a lot of cleanup. When we find something, we stick it in a file if it's not urgent, and then when we have, uh, numerous, we go ahead and initiate the text amendment. Um, so this is just a lot of that. Um, changing some references to, uh, applications being submitted to the building department versus planning and zoning. Um, so cleaning up on when you're submitting a site plan, you know, what you have to do, how many copies, instead of having to perpetually update the ordinance, we're changing the language to be within the application that we can easily modify easily without having to do a text amendment. So, um, just trying to get.
Perfect timing. Um, you started fading, but I think we heard, heard, heard your summary there. Thank you. Um, general cleanup. John, do you want to add anything more than what we already talked about on the 16th?
No, this is good.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we have a motion and we have support, um, to declare the second reading held. Is there any public comment? Uh, first, we'll, oh, sorry, Penny, your hand's up. I can see you now.
Just briefly, Julia Staimo put in a lot of work on this, and I really want to, um, just give a shout out to her expertise in proofreading and planning these documents to make sure that they're ready for publication, and it was published in the Lake Orion Review, and it was also published in the Oakland Press. And I just wanted to tell Julia, thank you so much.
Hey, thank you. Um, all right. Is there any public comment? I don't see any hands raised. I'll go in order like we mentioned. I'll go now to the, um, the phone. Anybody on the phone that's not raising that, that their face isn't on our screen, want to give comment? I'll give you a unmute. Okay, I will go now to the chat bubble, which there is none. And Penny, is there any inbox?
No, sir.
Okay. And I do see the stream, uh, that ON TV is doing for us. So thank you, Ian and team. Um, we look wonderful. Um, I don't know, you guys are using some good filters. No, um, but, but I, I appreciate that, that, uh, the ON TV crew has that, um, emailing a public comment, just plastered right on there. So we'll keep that on there, please, if you guys could do that and hear me down in the studio. Um, with that, I hear no comments, and we had a motion and support. I would ask Clerk Schultz to do a roll call because this is a, uh, text amendments.
Schultz, yes, then Steele?
Yes.
Bernie, then Del Rimpel?
Yes.
Flood, then Staimo?
Yes.
Pardon me, I'm so sorry. Flood, then Staimo?
Yes.
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes. Thank you, everyone that's helped us do that. Um, um, just give me a moment for my pen to catch up, so I can, I only have two hands and I can't mouse pen and type all at the same, um, same time. All right, next item on tonight's agenda, I'm going to go back to sharing my screen. Uh, hopefully this is working. Okay. Uh, I know it's not ideal, but thank you for your patience. Our next item on our agenda is a request for consideration under our zoning ordinance number 78. Uh, and basically, um, again, this is, uh, I'll try to blow this up. Again, this is on our website. We have a request from our Planning Director, Tammy Gerling, uh, to the board, and this is the proper protocol, uh, that the township would, um, uh, that we have a resident seeking approval under ordinance 78. Um, and then that whole section is there, I'm not going to drill down into it, to permit the combination of non-conforming lots into building sites less than the size requirement, requirement of the ordinance. Uh, the reason is because, um, that section of ordinance 78 provides that, uh, it is the Board of Trustees that at our sole discretion, uh, can permit the combination in whole or in part of non-conforming lots of record into building sites, uh, less than the size requirements provided in the ordinance. Um, we're encouraged to take a look at the backup information, which has been included. Uh, and here's the application from the applicant, and it notes the, the parcel and the reason why. Uh, and again, I will, um, I know I do see the applicant is on the, the phone or on the, on the video, but I wanted to just cover basically, uh, what came through to us was that, um, answer to the questions, uh, to the provisions required in the ordinance. Um, and basically, first, uh, there's a built, yes, there is an ability for a building to fit on both properties, as noted on the drawings with setbacks. Uh, the second answer was lot four will meet the 50-foot wide requirement, uh, and the Pine Island lake access will be approximately 27 feet, uh, at the driveway. And the Pine Island lot consists of approximately 1.23 acres and can support a new home and has existing structures currently. Uh, the other, uh, question on the application is, uh, lot four will have sewer, that's, I'm sorry, the other answer to the question, and Pine Island has an existing septic. The reason this is in front of us is because it is on Lake Orion, and if you're familiar with the lake, you know, we have lots of, um, small, small and non-conforming lots in sites. Um, and this is no, uh, and this, this is why it's in front of us. So here you can see, uh, a GIS view, satellite view of, uh, this is Cushing, uh, uh, road, and, uh, this, this is Pine Island. And what the applicant is requesting us to consider is a combination, uh, and I'll let Dan Kelly speak in, uh, in a moment first before I, um, open it up, um, to the applicant and/or questions from the board. Uh, but basically they're looking to adjust the way the drive gets to Pine Island and then make it so that a house can be built on, on this site here, lot four. So that's kind of my high level summary. Um, I would throw it to, uh, Dan Kelly, uh, just to explain to the board, uh, why this is in front of us and not the Planning Commission. Um, and I, and I know the answer, but I'll give you the opportunity to share that, Dan, and anything else that you think would be important for the board to know?
All right, thank, thanks Supervisor Barnett. You, uh, basically you summarized it very well. Under section 2701C3 of the ordinances, this is considered an application for combination of non-conforming lots, but the applicant, uh, both Diane and Matt Danaskis are, um, requesting the board to do is to allow lot four, uh, 25 additional feet, which would allow for the construction of a structure that, as the applicant has put it, more in conformity with the neighborhood and the adjacent areas along the lake. Um, it's allowed under the ordinances, uh, 2701C, which basically says upon the application to the Township Board, so it's directed to the Township Board by our ordinances, the board may in its sole discretion permit the combination. Um, the applicant has indicated that it meets the criteria specifically that the lot four is in conformance with the, uh, building, um, setbacks and requirements. It is larger than 50 feet and that it will be connected to public sewer, which the third requirement said that if it was less than 12,500 square feet, it had to be, uh, connected to public sewer. So it's basically within the discretion of the board.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Yeah.
Go ahead, Penny.
So basically, we're allowing a different standard, Tammy? Is that what we are doing with this? And that, because it would be a non-conforming without that provision?
You're, you're granting, if you so choose, what the ordinance allows you to do.
And they've gone through the combination process with you, or no?
They went through me and they did not. They went through me and they did not meet the width in area, so they were denied via that method.
And now they come to the board and ask for a different standard and then that requirement. Okay, so um, Chris, I'm prepared for a motion.
Okay.
Um, I move that we allow the different standard um, for parcel zero nine zero three two seventy eight zero twenty nine and combine the twenty five feet to the existing lot four to create that parcel.
Okay, is there support?
I'll I'll support the uh, motion with a comment and a questions.
Okay, so supported. Um. Mike, I don't know if you want to ask. Uh, yeah, go ahead and ask. Go ahead and give your comment and or questions and then I do know the applicant's here. So whether they answer or or.
Right, right.
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh. Looking at uh, probably directed at Tammy first. Uh, looking over the uh, documents here for the request application, I see that uh, length of ownership by current property owner, that wasn't filled in. And I didn't see any uh, documents for uh, uh, deeds or land contracts that they owned the property. I didn't see that in my packet.
I verified that during the land, um, the land combination reconfiguration application that yes, they indeed are the owners.
Okay, being on ZBA, we always look for those things and I I didn't see it on here. So you're okay with that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And and just so I, one more thing, Chris, just so the board understands typically that uh, you know, combinations, land divisions are administratively reviewed and approved. The the reason why this is in front of the board is because of the nonconformity and the board's discretion. Once the board, if it were to approve by way of discretion, Tammy Tammy will go through her typical administrative review, approval and filing with the uh, register of deeds for the new parcels.
Copy that. Thank you, Dan. Um, are there any other comments or questions from the board? Again, I know the applicant's here, but um, the motion is 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 to approve this. So I don't know that we need to hear from you unless you want to talk to us, but uh, are there any other comments or questions from the board? Um, is there any public comment? Any public comment? I see no one raising their hand. How about anyone that's not uh, that that wants to unmute their phone potentially and give a comment? I see no one. I hear no one. Um, I will go to the chat bubble. We're going to the chat bubble. All right, there's nothing in the chat bubble. I will go to email box. There is something, but it's it's general public comment not related to this item. So someone has emailed us. Thank you, Tonya Hamilton. We'll read your comment when we get to general public comment at the end. Uh, so I see no other public comment, no other board comment. I would ask the clerk to please call the role. It's moved by Schultz, supported by Flood to approve.
Leo then Bernie?
Yes. Yes.
Del Rimple then Flood?
Flood says yes.
We lost Julia again.
Barnett then Schultz?
Yes.
Yes. Del Rimple?
Um, we'll.
Don't I get to say? Am I already out?
John, Stimo.
Yes.
I apologize, sir.
It looks like Julia's gone dark and muted, so it looks like she's probably trying to reconnect. She was having a problem, so. Um, we'll just say it passes. Um, Julia, can you hear us? Now your your little thing changed again. You there, Julia?
Yes. Yeah, I had a struggle for a second.
You're voting. Are you? You heard the motion and you're is that a yes vote? Is that correct?
Can you repeat that? I'm so sorry for my technology.
No problem. It was a motion. I'll let you repeat it. Penny, you made the motion.
Sorry.
The motion is to allow a different standard and create the additional twenty five feet added to lot four for parcel ID zero nine zero three two seventy eight zero twenty nine.
And Flood made the motion to approve. I'm sorry, Schultz made the motion, Flood supported it. And uh, you're the last person to vote. We've all voted. It's up to you now.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously seven zero. So thank you. And thank you for those of you who are here. Go ahead. Diane, did you want to say something, Ms. Danaskis?
I just wanted to thank you for.
Welcome. And Diane was the applicant. You're welcome. Thanks for being here, Diane. Um, and good luck. Hope you build a nice house on our lake. Increase our property values, please, all of ours. Um, all right, that brings us to, we added two items tonight. I will share them on my screen because I realize that some of you may not have had an opportunity to uh, review them yet. And Jeff Stout added both these items. He's here with us. Thanks, Jeff, for still being here. Uh, the first item is um, the Baldwin Phase One mowing. Jeff, as I'm pulling this up, would you please just kind of give the board a high level of why this was added tonight?
Sure. So right now we're just dealing with Baldur Road Phase One. Um, we started mowing it last year. Um, there's several areas of plantings that are still under warranty, which is part of the contractor's responsibility. So at this point, we're basically just mowing, weed whipping. Essentially down the road will fertilize and whatnot, but uh, we had Oakland uh, property do it last year uh, without incident. Everything was looking good. Went out for quote this year. Um, their pricing actually saves us a couple thousand dollars throughout the season, which is about twenty eight mows. So my recommendation is to uh, is to continue with them. Uh, actually their price went down from last year. So uh, in the time that we are in, we're we're trying to save every dollar, especially for buildings and grounds. I think they'll do us another good job this year. Next year, when phase two and the fountain and the other plantings get going, I'll create a a request for quote that details all of that and it'll be extensive as far as plant care and fertilization and mowing. You know, the the uh, fountain issues. Um, but for right now, we've we've kind of just uh, we're just going to take care of what we got for lack of a better phrase.
And I popped up both those bids. We got um, the the previous contractor. And then we got another bid. They were close, but the previous contractor was lower and they their price actually came down as Jeff outlined, so. We would entertain a motion um, to um, let me pull that back up, sorry. Um, the proposed motion would be the township board to move approval to allow the Director of Public Services to enter into a mowing contract with Oakland Property manages managers, I'm sorry, for the two thousand twenty Baldwin Road Phase One project uh, mowing at a cost of five hundred and twenty five dollars per week for the twenty eight week season beginning the week of May fourth. Or is there someone that wants to say so moved?
Mr. 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 Supervisor, I had to make a conflict of interest statement prior to uh, going further with me.
Okay.
I hired this company also to do my lawn service and snow plowing, so I just want to make the board member and the public know that I don't have a conflict of interest with this, but they are my also my company. I like it that on the public record.
Okay, it's noted. Do they do a good job cutting your grass?
Excellent.
Okay, good.
I move, so moved.
Um, it was moved by, it was moved by um, Stimo. Are you supporting it Schultz?
Yes, I do. And I did have one comment.
Okay, go ahead with your comment.
So that's not a public or a comp. What do you call it? It's not a conflict of interest, but it was just noted, correct?
I I don't think it is, Dan. I mean.
No, I mean, if anybody wanted to make a a motion to recuse, you could, but I don't see that it's a conflict.
Okay, and then also, so the board is aware, Jillian did send an email out to everybody. You have these two items in extras of board book.
Yep. And they're on.
Who was that moved by, sir?
It was moved by trustee Stimo and supported by yourself.
Very good. Thank you.
A treasure steel. Uh, you have your hand up?
Um, just a quick question. My um, Jeff, the the phase two doesn't have any grass right now. And um, are the sprinklers? I know we, there was one that was had a wild hair last year. Um, just wondering if that has been repaired and if they will also watch the sprinklers or is that a different contract or do we watch the sprinklers? And and you said we're not going to fertilize phase one at all at this time. So it's actually three questions.
I'll start with the last. We will fertilize, but it'll be à la carte. We'll probably do a weed and feed in the uh, soon and probably something in the fall. The problem with the median area, which is the bulk of it, is that it's getting set to get all dug up again to add new planting. So until we have that, those boundaries set aside, we're not going to talk too much about fertilization. Um, the, I don't know what wild hair you're referring to, but the sprinklers are me and I'll be watching those along with my uh, DPW crew. And what was the third thing, Danny?
There's no, the wild heroes, I thought we spun a leak last year. That's what I thought. And then the um, the the third one is there is no, is there any grass in uh, phase two at all? I think that you, I think that you.
There'll be grass perhaps at the end of the season, but it's not even for the discussion for mowing right now because it'll have to have some time before it's established. And it'll be some time before RCOC signs off on that and actually releases it to the owner, which is us.
And no sprinkler leaks. We didn't have a sprinkler leak. I swear we had one last year.
Well, it was perceived as a sprinkler leak, but it wasn't. It was just uh, copious amounts of watering by the contractor for lack of a better phrase.
Okay. Um. All right. Thank you, Jeff, for being here and answering those questions. Are there any other questions of our Director of Public Services? How about any public comment on this item? Uh, and okay, so and I don't see no hands. I mean, I got to keep doing the the same way. By the way, uh, Tammy does a great job of this during her meetings. It's hard. Tammy's um, I'm trying to learn from you, Tammy. Okay, so no one has their hand raised. How about anyone want to unmute their microphone? Caller, caller. Nope. Okay. How about chat bubble? Nothing. How about checking our inbox? Anything? Okay, uh, that said, moved and supported by Stimo and Schultz. Would you please do a roll call, clerk Schultz?
Bernie then Del Rimple?
Yes.
Yes.
Love then Stimo?
Yes.
Yes.
Barnett then Schultz?
Yes.
Yes, Steel?
Yes.
So we can thank Jeff for uh, doing a great job. And now tell us some more bad news, Jeff. So we have one more. I I I'm sorry. I'm.
Let me do it. Let let.
Like this are everyday, regular meetings. Um, next item on tonight's agenda, you can see I haven't moved out of this chair much today and I've been in this like the eighteenth in a row of these. Uh, next on tonight's agenda was our last added added item to our pending business, which is the Hemingway Woods sanitary force sewer main sewer sanitary sewer main. Uh, this item is on our agenda because why, Jeff?
Well, let me give you good news. The good news is we responded to a complaint of an order of sewer and we've established that there is a problem and we're out there today uh, starting the the uh, to make it right. Jim Stevens is also on the call here and he can answer any technical questions, but essentially it's as simple as that. Received a complaint of an order of sewer from the Hemingway Woods uh, several residents. Bill Basco, our water sewer superintendent, along with Jim Stevens and his crew investigated. Um, in your packet, you can read along with Jimmy's uh, letter, but which indicates what the problem may or may not be. Our underground emergency contractor Superior was called in. Uh, game plan established and we're hard at work uh, from eight o'clock this morning. Basically uh, establishing a new forced sewer main through directional boring practices. So I can, or Jimmy can answer any other questions. It's about a fifty thousand dollar hit. But uh, it obviously has to be done.
Okay. Um, so it's about a fifty thousand dollar project. This is coming from the Water and Sewer Fund because that's uh, the enterprise fund. Yes, clerk Schultz.
Um, so I've, I would move to approve and have the Director of Public Services to contract with Superior Excavating to make the required repairs to the sanitary sewer force main serving the Hemingway Woods subdivision at a cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Support. Okay. It was moved by clerk Schultz and supported by trustee um, Flood, correct?
Correct.
Got it. Um, any other comments or questions for uh, uh, for Jeff? He did a nice job summarizing. Uh, and Jim Stevens is also here on the line. If we have questions for Jim. Are there any board comments or questions for Jeff or Jim? Mike?
I think, want to thank Jeff and Jim and the gang, the DPW for taking care of our sewer, water and sewer in our township. We got excellent people on the job. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Yep, um. I just want to get you on the record, Jim. Say hi.
Hi, how's everybody doing tonight? And thank you for the nice comments.
There we go. Yep. Jim, I would say OHM uh, I've but we've we've um, bombarded them with all kinds of requests during the last seven weeks of the stay home order. There, Jim, hi, Jim, looking good. Um, and uh, they've been extremely responsive, as has Dan and his team at the Kelly Firm. So we've got some awesome consultants helping us out. Um, all right, with that, I would uh, go to now, public comment. Anyone raise your hand that I can see your face? See, oh, Danny, go ahead.
Do you want to do your police reports first?
Uh, I got it. We got a, we haven't voted on the the.
Oh, oh, public comment. I'm sorry you went. I'm sorry. I jumped. Sorry.
No problem. You're excited. I like that anticipation. All right, uh, no public comment on the screen. Uh, anybody want to unmute themselves who's on the phone? There is nothing in our chat bubble and I'm looking at the email, but I'll let you report it, Penny. Nothing.
Sir, nothing.
Hey, clerk Schultz, would you please call the role on the Hemingway Woods sanitary sewer uh, repairs?
Del Rimple then Flood?
Yes.
Yes.
Stimo then Barnett?
Yeah, yes.
All right, John, yes.
Schultz then Steel, yes?
Yes.
Bernie?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to reports. That completes the regular business. We have a couple of reports.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, Jeff. Yep. Um. First is our our standard uh, police and fire reports. I'll pull those up. These are interesting to read if you're bored at home, like, you know, would be bored at home, right? Uh, but they're available on our website. You can see what's going on with our police and fire department and they've been fairly busy. Um, and so that is there for you to look at if I can find it someplace. Um, and then also, uh, I guess I'll I'll just stop talking there. I will just say that um, you know, we've been really busy. We assisted yesterday, we assisted um, Oxford Township on a large um, grass, a large Frag Mighty fire. I I rode out there and looked at it. Um, and luckily they were able to save all the houses, but it was insane, crazy. And now we know why we fight Frag Mighty so much, but uh, lots of things going on. And if Lieutenant Toth was here, he'd tell you that people are getting a little bit punchy being stuck in their houses. And the one other public service note, because I don't see his name on the screen um, that he would want me to make and he would make if he were here, is just to remind folks to please uh, lock your car doors. And don't leave your keys in your ignition. Um, I was guilty of that for many years. Um, we live in a very extremely safe community. That said, um, you know, with people uh, having more time on their hands and students and young people um, getting really tired of being stuck inside, we've just seen a little bit more wandering around and people. So nothing specific to be afraid of. And just lock your car doors. That's the biggest thing you can do to protect yourself from people uh, grabbing the change out of your uh, your um, car. So that's what LT would say, but we uh, not, it's not meant to fear anyone. There's no major issue. It's just that we've seen a little uptick in that. Um, so to entertain a motion to receive and file the police and fire report?
So moved. So moved to board.
And support. I will. Um, are there any questions? Julia, did you have a young one that wanted to give public comment or no?
No, she came to rescue the puppy that's been sitting at my feet.
Okay, all right. Um, all in favor of receiving and filing the police and fire reports, say aye or give a thumbs up?
Aye.
Aye.
I see seven. Anyone? Anyone opposed? All right, that passes. Uh, next we have the electronic bid procedures item. Um, I'm going to let clerk Schultz kind of cover this, um, because this is, this is one of the things we're doing to um, do the best we can in the COVID nineteen world and continue doing business. So clerk Schultz?
I want to thank Jessica Katers and from OHM and also Dan Kelly with the Kelly Firm. Uh, we were able to quickly um, come into agreement on the procedures that we want to follow and present to the board to um, due to the COVID nineteen state of emergency, we want to review that bid policy. And the action before the board is to receive and file. Chris did sign that. He has those emergency ordered um, approval to do so. And he did sign that agreement, but the board needed to be made aware of this change. And it will be in place while we are under the requirements that our building is closed and people won't be in the building. Pursuant to the authority granted to this township supervisor. Pursuant to the authority granted to the Township Supervisor under the Board of Trustees Resolution declaring a state of emergency dated March sixteenth, twenty twenty, the Township Supervisor does hereby approve a temporary basis and to continue until terminated the following process for accepting and awarding electronic bids. Um, basically that we will have the bids accepted through the electronic measures to the um appropriate people, including myself, and then we will notify the bidder that we did receive their bid. Either the Township Engineer or the Township Clerk's Office will provide this email of notification. In the case of bids being received by OHM and the Township's Clerk's Office, both OHM and the Township will open those bids at the same time and record the results. Upon confirmation of the bid results, a bid tally sheet will be prepared and provided to all bidders. A copy of this recorded bid will be provided to the Township Clerk's Office for filing as part of the public record. No bids will be awarded without written authorization of the Township Supervisor, and they will also come back to the Board of Trustees for consideration. And I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of this and we will follow these same procedures until we're no longer under this order. And I move to receive and file as presented.
Okay.
Support.
And Danny, I see your hand up.
Um, I just wanted to comment that this um has transpired because we were moving forward with the safety path uh repair along uh Jocelyn Road between Indian Wood and Heights on the um, on the east side. And just um looking forward to that be, that repair being done. So hopefully this is a, a good start to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. We are still working. That's what hopefully everyone out there listening, um, our board knows this, but and uh our employees know, but we're working really diligently here, all departments. So this helps us to continue to do that and do it in a very open and transparent fashion. So thanks for your help on this, Clerk Schultz, and Dan, our attorney, he's been helpful as well. Um, any questions more from the, any further questions from the board? Um, okay, public comment. Anyone want to raise their hand? Receiving and filing, anyone want to unmute themselves? I see no public comment via the other two uh chat or the email. So I, all in favor of receiving and filing, say aye or give me a thumbs up, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, seven zero, that passes. All right. Next item on tonight's agenda is public comment part two. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the board about anything your heart desires. Um, we'd ask that you keep your comments to um three minutes, but we'll give you a little break if you really have something that you want to tell us that's important. Um, so I'm gonna continue, I see your hand, Penny, but I'm gonna continue with the same order that we've been doing that we told our residents that we do. So first of all, if you're on the meeting and you want to give public comment about anything, please raise your hand. Seeing none. If you're on the phone, uh feel free to unmute yourself if you'd like to give a comment on anything. You can do that now. I'll wait a moment. Hearing no one. I will, there's nothing in the chat bubble, but I will throw it to Penny. I think we did receive one during the meeting.
Um, yes, we did. Thank you Supervisor Barnett. So Tanya Hamilton with the North Oak Community Coalition Board um said to give her thanks to this Board of Trustees and the Township Supervisor for the proclamation of May as Mental Health Awareness Month. The NOCC is dedicated to strengthening mental health support for Orient Township residents. Reducing stigma and increasing access to valuable resources is a focus that we all share. Is with the hope and confidence in our wonderful Orient Township community that we will unite in efforts to support the well-being of all. Tanya Hamilton, North Oak Community Coalition.
Thank you. Thank you, Tanya. Um, and thanks for those of you who are watching from home in a different way than probably you've seen us before, Brady Bunch style. Um, all right, that said, um, and I actually, I probably should have done this earlier because you can see active cameras and it reshuffles the deck. Um, anyway, um, that said, I would bring it to the board. For board member comments. Uh, so I will just start in the order you're showing up on my screen, which is uh Brian Burney. Any board member comments tonight?
Yeah, um, just real quick, uh today, as you know, or well, it's this week, it's Teacher Appreciation Week. And just a shout out one to all the teachers out there uh in our very own Mrs. Del Rimple. Um, but also um at, today at, at St. Joe's, we had a big uh car parade. Um, and the uh, in our morning announcements this morning, uh the principal, Christmas Miggly um said that he, you know, called the, the Sheriff's Office and said, hey, you know, is this illegal? Can we do this? Is this okay? Um, and uh he said absolutely, and uh on top of that, we want to lead it. So very cool of the Sheriff's Department to show up and give that extra little uh effort uh to make it special for all the teachers that lined up in the back parking lot and everyone drove around and honked their horns, made sounds and stuff. I just thought that was nice to share. Um, you know, everyone's working together on this and so many different circumstances, but it's nice to see everyone come together with that. Um, and then obviously, you know, to continue to support our local businesses. Um, you know, they're still struggling. They're struggling for a long time, even when we get back to business. So just make the extra effort to get some carryout, to do any type of business you can, order some extra stuff um to help keep these businesses afloat. Um, because I know, I know they're all struggling. Um, and then on, on my last bit is um just a, just a little heads up. Um, one of my clients uh is in the sanitation business in uh Florida. And they have this, um, they partner with a company with sanity service. Um, and basically what it is, it's a machine that goes inside a vehicle and uh it purifies it in like ten minutes. So uh Chief Duke and I and the, the rest of the, you know, who, a couple others uh with the Fire Department, we talked about this. I just said, hey, you know, this might be something we all look at. Um, for the ambulances, and you know, once we get through all this and especially moving forward with any kind of flu season or anything. Um, but there is a big write-up and I can send it to, to everyone. The Fort Lauderdale Fire Department um uses this and it's been a huge help in the fight, obviously against COVID nineteen. Um, but just any, you know, sanitation and kind of, so expect more on that. Uh, it's called, again, it's called Sanity Service, if you want to look it up. Um, it's actually from Europe, uh but uh they've been using it and it's uh highly effective. Hopefully we can bring it here. I don't think it's, it's terribly expensive, but uh anyways, more, more on that. It's just, uh, you know, cool technologies out there that can, that can help with this and prepare us for. That's it for me.
Cool. Thank you, Brian. Um, Julia, and by the way, ON TV, um, thank you if you can hear me in the studio. One of the things you can do is on the view, uh on the view, you can say view active cameras and then it just shows the people whose faces are on the screen. So that, that we become larger, not that that's a good thing, but um so you can click on that, view active cameras instead of view all. Uh, but next on my list is Julia Del Rimple. Go ahead, Julia, with your comments, if any?
Yeah, thanks for the teacher love and love to all of our teachers out there uh right now doing all of the stuff that's going on. Um, I just wanted to say we had a great morning again at Forgotten Harvest this morning. Um, we were out of food by about twelve fifteen today, which is the fastest that the food has been gone um in the last six weeks. Uh, people were lined up starting at like seven thirty AM to be in line um to get stuff today. So another great experience with that one. And then um same thing with Bernie, help support all of our local businesses, get the takeout when you can. Um, and try to help them do anything to, to really help.
Thank you, Julia. And I do want to give a shout out to Julia because she has been there every week. Um, out there for six hours, I think, every Monday, just giving out food. So thank you, Julia, thumbs up there. Um, all right, next on my screen is Clerk Schultz. Penny, what do you have for the group tonight?
I appreciate everybody on the board and the directors and the employees. I know everybody's working very hard to keep serving our residents and it's not easy in this environment, but we are doing it. And I'm grateful for um each one of you. Also, I see that we have some people that have um joined the meeting tonight. Spread the word. We want as many people as possible to see what's happening. I see um Marie Monaco is out there tonight and I appreciate ON TV being there for us, Diane, and ask us, it's good to see you too. And I know that we're all getting through this together. This has been a big deal for our community. And Supervisor Barnett, I appreciate your leadership. I know this has not been easy, but you rose to the occasion and people are seeing that. So thank you.
Thank you, Penny. Uh, Mr. Flood, you're next on my screen, then Donnie, then John. Mike?
Okay, I want to thank Julia too also for the uh working out there. We drove, my wife and I were on our way to get our COVID nineteen uh testing today at the doctor's office. We drove by there and wow, I couldn't believe the lineup there at Wildwood there. Awesome. Good job. Thanks. Uh, I just want to announce that uh the candidacies have all been done now for running for local uh uh Township Board. I want to congratulate Supervisor Barnett, Clerk Schultz, and Trustee Steel. Uh, congratulations on yours and I'm looking forward to all those trustees uh campaigning and I think the people will make the right choice. And I want to appreciate uh Maria for joining tonight and uh, and we need to get more people involved in our politics. Uh, grassroots, that's where it's at. It's not Washington DC, it's not the state legislature, it's right here in Orient Township itself. And uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Steel, treasurer, you said trustee by the way, Mike?
Well, let, let, let me apologize. Former trustee, now treasurer and treasurer.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say thanks, thanks spring. We are very thankful and happy to be able to have a happy um warm weekend. Um, flowers are abound and it makes this whole incident that we're going through much more um easier to tolerate when the sun is shining and the flowers are out. So on that note, I want to wish all the mothers out there, Happy Mother's Day. And um, may you keep your sanity and your kids safe and your hair tucked in a hat. So um, that's all I want to say. Thanks.
All right, um trustee Stimal.
Uh, Julia Tharren, I couldn't be out there with you this morning. Woke up and uh got online and I had about fifteen emails from people of stuff I had to take care of for work. I guess that's a good sign because that means people are starting to feel like we're gonna start going back to work regularly pretty soon here. So everybody's wanting their projects to get moving. Uh, other than that, not, nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have a couple of things I wanted to share. First of all, um I do, I did send an email to you all. You just got it. It might be the beeping in the background of where we're gonna go to after uh this far closed session. It's gonna be a different room. A different virtual room. You can stay where you're seated now, but anyway, um I just want to say, uh you know, what a crazy time. We, we have a strong, resilient community. We have an amazing workforce here, amazing staff here at Township all and at our community center and in the field. Um, you know, we are dealing with some constricting of the budget, um because our revenues are at risk. Um, and so we're being very proactive and forward-thinking um as a team to be prepared and not say we wish we would have done something before, you know, so so that's great news. It is not, it has not been a fun process. And so um, if you read the newspapers or if you read online, if you don't get a newspaper anymore, you'll see that many communities around us have started to go through the same process. So that's the process we're in. Again, it's not fun, but I do want to say thanks to our staff and to our directors who have been um working some till midnight, multiple nights in the last week with me to try to do everything in our power to um make the best decisions for our residents and for the people that work here. Um, I just want to say, you know, it's an opportunity for us right now to do a few things. Um, if you think about these three groups, our students um who have had their lives turned upside down and probably throw in there the pa, their parents who are ready to probably kill some of the students. The class of twenty twenty, I know we talked a lot about this, but um there's a really cool sign program that if you bend down through the village or, or on the Pink Creek Trail, um, a couple of parents and led by Amy Sylvester have put together a cool way to honor our seniors. Um, so you can find that information on Facebook, uh but it's an opportunity to kind of walk down the trail and see lots of the faces of the students that haven't got to have a regular senior year. Um, and I know um the schools are doing a lot too as well to try to really honor their, their staff, which are our teachers. Um, so we want to, want to um thank the teachers as well. Um, but Lake Ork Community Schools put something, I'm gonna share my screen for a couple of things here, see if this works. If not, it'll be a big failure. Uh, but let me just try this. Um, one of the cool things that came up today in our COVID response meeting was um this, this is pretty cool. Um, Marion Superintendent Marion Genopolis mentioned they're giving shout-outs to frontline LOCs alums. So these are people that are on the front lines that have graduated, that are dragons. They're like, there's our, our very own Chris Hagan, who's our firefighter um uh lieutenant. So anyway, this is kind of cool. Uh, you see nurses and doctors and first responders. So if you have someone that should be recognized, you can drop them in here. But the other thing you could do is just copy and paste this link to your Facebook page and say, and let's, let's share this. This is, these are the people that are uh we really want to support. Um, also, as mentioned, um uh I did want to mention a shout out to our parks. They're working really diligently on um uh working on virtual programming. What is, what does uh Parks and Recreation look like in a COVID nineteen world? Um, unfortunately, it doesn't look a lot like this for a little while. Uh, so um there's lots of cool things that are popping up here and classes you can join uh via Facebook and Zoom and things like that. So check out our parks and I want to thank them for all the work they're doing. Um, the other thing I wanted to share was um Julia covered Forgotten Harvest. Oh, the road updates. Um, we have three road projects happening right now in our community. Heights Road, which is in the village, it's a water main replacement, the road's closed. Uh, Lapeer Road has started. If you haven't been on that road in the last few days, you'll be surprised when you cruise up it next time. Um, and Baldwin Road obviously continues. So there's a great resource for you. Um, we're not trying to make you join Facebook, but if you go to Facebook and you typed in Orient Township Road Updates, um you would be able to um find this really cool page that gives you daily updates on what's happening in the community and all the road projects. So uh here it is, Orient Township Road Updates, and it looks just like this. Uh, and then you'll be able to see uh this, this page is updated. And again, we're trying to just keep this very specific to the road projects. Uh, we get lots of people asking questions. We post all the detours uh and things like that. So that's a great resource for you as well. Um, and then um I did want to just share, you know, we're doing a lot to try to be on the front line or in the front edge when we are, we do come back. This is kind of um a, a cool thing. We created these, um, our Budget and Procurement Director with our HR Director created these cool welcome back kits for our staff. So hopefully don't wreck the surprise if you're watching staff. There you go, surprise. Uh, but we're trying to make sure that our staff feels valued and safe when we come back to work. Uh, we're able to procure a lot of this stuff from local vendors. So um, I will, uh, I won't, I already wrecked the surprise, but some of you already know it's already out. So um, and then I just wanted to kind of close by just saying again, um, thanks for the kind words to the, to those of you who have um said nice things. It's a really difficult um position that we're all in. And uh we're doing our best to try to make decisions that are best for our residents and our staff. Um, I will tell you that I am on, um, I think, I, I don't know if I mentioned it in a board meeting, so I'll mention it to, to you all, but um I was appointed by Oakland County Executive Dave Coulter to be on the thirty-person Economic Recovery Task Force. Um, Oakland County COVID nineteen Economic Development Recovery Task Force. It's a mouthful. The purpose is to do what we can to make suggestions as a group to help get our economy open as soon as possible in a safe manner. And so um I was honored to take that as one of two electeds in the county to be put on that task force. Um, and again, if you have insight or input and you want to provide it to me, we meet three times a week. We actually met this afternoon. It's, there's a lot of work to do. Um, but it seems like we're making some progress. So um, and then the last thing I'll share is that the Oakland County Business, Small Business Stabilization Grant, which received two point three million dollars in funding um three weeks ago, last Tuesday, the county received, I believe it was a hundred and fifteen million dollars of CARES funds, um a hundred and some million dollars in CARES money uh from the federal government. And on Wednesday, the Board of Commissioners voted to add an additional twelve million dollars to that Small Business Stabilization Grant Program. Uh, so there were a little over seven thousand applicants in the first go-round. They are not reopening it, unfortunately. I, I, I lobbied for that because I don't think it's fair to just exclude businesses that didn't know about it the first time. Unfortunately, they are not going to reopen it. So in our district, up here in District Two in the county, we have to figure out how we're gonna do a lot about. Um, I think it's uh just under, I think it's just over three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and so we have to go through the applications. They're already scored by the county, but if you have submitted for one of those grants in the first round, uh you will be reconsidered in the second round here, which will be supposed to be completed this Thursday. So that's kind of the update from my seat. Um, I will say that um I've been doing daily updates on Facebook. Um, I have a Township Supervisor Facebook page. I don't get political there. I don't talk about Republican or Democrat things. I just put facts out there as it relates to my job as a Township Supervisor. It's a great place for resources. We've had a lot of people that have been tuning in daily. So uh with that, lot, lot going on, uh but we're trying to do the. So, uh, with that, lot, lot going on, uh, but we're trying to do the best we can to keep our residents connected, engaged in, and, um, get to the resources that they need. And if anyone you know is in need, uh, there are lots of ways for us to meet those needs. If you go to our homepage, they're all listed there. And I don't know one person in our community that has, from someone who's well-equipped working to someone who didn't have food, to someone that hasn't left their house in five weeks, someone that needed distilled water delivered to their house, to someone that needed diapers. We have found a way to meet every single need, uh, that has been coming through our Help at Orient Township email, uh, through our calls to our senior citizens, uh, or through our Lake Ori, our Lake Orient CARES Facebook page. So, um, please ask for help, um, on behalf of yourself or neighbors that you know might need it because we have people that are ready and will, uh, be able to help. So with that, catch my breath. I would entertain a motion. Thank you everyone for your patience. It's 8:13, we're very efficient. Um, the rest of the board has work to do. Those of you that are watching from home, you're done. Um, thanks for joining us. Uh, board members, I did send the link to the closed session meeting room in your email. You received it about 10 minutes ago. Uh, so we will close this room.